All right, good evening and welcome to the January 14th meeting of the NIXA City Council, first one of the year. Call the meeting order.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Matt Ogden.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, starting out tonight, we have a presentation from Navigate updating us on the police department.
All right, good evening Mayor, good evening Council, thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Katie Aholt and I'm a Director with Navigate Building Solutions. We are serving as your owner's representative on the design and construction of your new police department facility. Also here this evening in the audience, we have Leah Hurt with Kianini Architects and Nate Rapp with Insight Design. There we go. Since it is my first time coming to speak to you, I just wanted to give you a quick introduction to Navigate. So, like I mentioned, we're an owner's representative company. We don't design and we don't build your project, we just help serve in a project management role for you all. We are based in St. Louis, we do have an office in Kansas City as well with many projects here local to the Nixa and Springfield area, working with your school district as well as Springfield School District and the Branson Police Department as well. A hundred percent of our work is performed as an owner's rep and construction manager, with a key role really being to manage your owner budget and schedule risks. Tonight, we're going to go through a recap and progress to date of where we're at in the design of the new police facility. We'll show you some of the schematic design documents where they stand today, the program floor plan, site plan, some renderings. We'll give you an update on the overall project budget as well as schedule and next steps. All right, so to start us off and recap progress to date, as you're all aware, the city purchased the property at North Leanne Drive back in September of 2024. Leading up to that effort was really quite an effort related to site due diligence and conceptual planning. So, we wanted to review for you all to make sure the site was a good fit for the overall facility that we were looking at. So, in terms of the evaluation performed, there was a sinkhole evaluation, geotechnical investigation, as well as a site survey, which really gave us the data we needed to understand how the potential new facility would locate on the site. And then from there, we also went into some conceptual planning specific to the building itself. So, we looked at the overall program, which got us to a facility size. We looked at how that facility size could fit in a single story on this site, which was one of the key drivers of moving this direction. We looked at that site plan concept as well as some elevation studies to make sure the facility was a good fit in the neighborhood, and then transferred all of that over into a total program budget evaluation. So, we knew we had an established budget of $15 million for the project and wanted to make sure the relocation of the facility to the site would still work within those parameters. So, after the concept was complete, we jumped into what's called schematic design. Like I mentioned, we went through the programming effort to determine the size of the facility. So, you can see here at the top that the project is a new single-story, 21,280 square foot facility. In terms of the program, the items bulleted here kind of talk about the main components of the facility, which include the public entry and community room, the administration space for command, patrol, support services staff, investigations, crime prevention, all of those teams. There's also some common office space, which includes conference rooms, roll call and briefing, break room and lounge spaces, includes the processing and evidence, the lockers and training area, a Sally Port as well as those sort of ancillary circulation and storage spaces. When we start looking at the site, there is a secure parking lot, that includes some covered police parking to the back of the facility. Civilian parking is to the front for the public access. To the back of the site, we've been able to accommodate a small walking track, which I believe the police department uses for training and other opportunities. We've discussed this required stormwater detention and how this can be shared with the neighboring property and the development that's occurring on the remainder of the property. And we've also made accommodations for an emergency generator and a potential second access drive over to North Nicholas Road. Couple other notes on here, under the future improvements box, we recognize that the facility when this first started, which was a larger facility with some shell space available for future expansion. So, what we've done when we've looked at this new plan is make sure that the building could still be expanded in the future and have allowed for that kind of off the backside, as you'll see when we start looking at those plans. There is also site space that would allow for a potential vehicle storage building or shed that could also be constructed in the future. So, this is the schematic design floor plan, the colors are a little hard to see on the screen here, but really the colors kind of block out those programmatic elements that we talked about. So, like I mentioned, it is a single-story facility. The public entry is facing east on the building and has direct access for the training room or community room right off the lobby. So, this could be a space that could be used outside of just police department operations. From there, you really get into the back of house, kind of starting at the top left. This is the detective and support services area of the building. Below that, you will see a classroom, which is really a training and education function for the department itself, which is then bordered by the captain and the administrative space below that. On the right side of the page, you'll see up at the top, there's an area for patrol officers, so this is for report writing. They will be able to pull into the back of the building in the secured parking area, access the building from the rear and directly into that space as the patrol staff. The gray area, I believe, is the locker room and sort of fitness and training area of the facility. And then over on the right-hand side, you will see the evidence processing area located adjacent to the Sally Port. The next couple of slides just give you a few renderings of what the interiors are going to look like in the building. We actually had a good couple hour meeting today where we sat with the chief and staff and reviewed finished selections. So, none of this is final in these images, just to give you an idea of the look and feel of the building. So, this one here is particularly the public lobby. So, when you come in to the main entrance, there will be some public space, a transaction area within that before you then enter back into the more secure police function of the space. This rendering shows the break room and lounge, so this is off of the back entry of the building. So, again, the patrol staff will be able to come into the secure area, the rear of the building, access the break room and lounge, which is central to the building, but also easily accessible from the exterior. This rendering is the community room or training room to the front of the building. So, again, accessible by public, but also secured from the police functions of the building. They will have access into this space from their area of the building as well, so multipurpose space. All right, this image gives you a feel for the building placement on the site. So, in total, the property is about five acres. You can see that the facility itself fits nicely within the property boundaries. When you pull in off of Leanne Drive, this is the civilian or public parking portion of the building that will allow you access to the front entrance. From there, you will circulate around either side of the building through security gates, back to the secured parking area where you can see there's also a zone of covered parking, kind of shaded in the middle there. I mentioned the walking track and future garage facility, those are on the far left of the page, kind of towards the back of the site. You can see those outlined. And then, as I mentioned, there are kind of two zones of potential expansion for the building in the future. Each of these are about a little more than 5,000 square foot each. So, facility today is a little over 21,000 with a potential to expand up to around 31,000 should the need arise. This rendering here shows you the front elevation of the building. So, again, today, we looked at exterior materials and started working on selections for the various materials. It is a combination of brick and masonry building, also with some metal panels. Okay, the next couple of slides are going to talk more specifically about the project budget. So, like I mentioned, we know the city has established the total program budget at $15 million. When we mention the total program budget, what we mean by that is, you know, all costs related to the project. So, that is not specific just to the construction cost itself. It also picks up everything like the furniture, fixtures, equipment, all of the design fees and professional services, any costs you have related to technology, so maybe card access cameras, audiovisual, IT equipment, all of that infrastructure type of equipment. We can pick up costs for financing and land acquisition in this budget and then also make sure we're including adequate contingencies and cost escalations, knowing that we're still looking a little bit forward into the future for the time of construction. So, from a timeline perspective, we received the schematic design deliverable from the design team back in November. This included the new site and building location, it gave us some information about utilities, parking, stormwater. It gave us, you know, more significant plans for the, you know, the walls, the doors, everything that will make up the facility, as well as some elevations and details that would allow us to put together a firm price estimate for this. It also included narratives of the mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems. And there are a few scopes of work that we've identified as alternates, being the driveline, the covered parking, the stormwater detention is a requirement, but we listed it kind of as a separate cost because we know there's a potential cost sharing there with the developer at the adjacent property. So, Navigate completed our detailed cost estimate back in December and we're presenting that to you here this evening. So, this slide here does focus specifically on the construction estimate. You can see we've broken it down kind of into high-level categories, which we set up as we kind of tracked the progress of the facility relocation. So, the bulk of the cost is going into the building construction, as you can see. The next big cost was related to the site work. So, that was one of the differences between choosing this location versus a location here on your campus, is a lot of that parking was already in place. So, when we made the switch, we needed to make sure that we were accounting for that as the cost of work as well. I mentioned the stormwater detention, right now, we're showing about 20% of that cost of that detention facility. Coming back to the city, that's something that I believe Jimmy has been working on, what that looks like from the standpoint with the agreement from the developer. We are budgeting for the covered parking structure. Like I mentioned, we'll probably include this as an alternate. So, if, you know, costs increase or there's a reason that scope needs to be reduced to maintain budget, this would be something that we could potentially scale back as the project progresses. The secondary entrance is included. You'll see a budget for the contractor markups and then an escalation budget. When we do our cost estimate, it's based on unit cost as of today and then we make projections for escalation from today through the time of bidding. So, you'll see here in the next slides that we're anticipating contractor bidding in July of this year. So, 2% escalation is intended to cover any cost increase between now and that time. In addition, the last line item you see here is construction contingency. So, we're currently carrying about 10% for that or a little over $1 million. Of the $12 million total construction budget is set aside as contingency. All right, so this slide rolls that into the total program budget, like I mentioned, that includes all of the costs for the project. You'll see that top line item, the construction contracts, is just the detail that we walked through. From there, we have a category for special construction, which picks up some utility connections, signage, some site furnishings. FFNE is below that, that's where we pick up the budget for the furniture, the police and evidence storage solutions, there's locker, fitness equipment appliances, all rolled into that number there. The professional services category picks up the design, project management, mechanical systems, commissioning, materials testing, surveying and a lot of that due diligence cost that I mentioned on one of the previous slides. Technology is the equipment and devices. Land acquisition, we are carrying as no cost to this budget, that is being carried under an alternate funding source by the city. And the last line item is what we call owner contingency. So, this is a contingency line item in addition to the 10% we have in the construction budget that can be used to kind of cover owner decisions. One of the discussions we've had is the potential of addition of solar to the facility, which we've learned is in the range of about $200,000. So, we were strategic in setting aside this budget, knowing that if we're able to kind of reserve it through the course of the design and going into construction, that that's something that the city could then reallocate back into the building for that expense or anything else that you should choose. So, in total, we're sitting just under 5.2 million or 15.2 million, excuse me, which is a little over where we had started at the $15 million mark. But, we are wrapping up the design development documents, which is the next stage of design. Here, towards the beginning of February, we're targeting some refinements in some of the mechanical and electrical scope costs and we feel confident that we can keep things in line as we get through this next level of design. So, at a high level, here's a slide that outlines the project's schedule. So, as I mentioned, schematic design was completed back in December. We're now in that design development stage of the drawings where we're expecting those documents to be complete at the end of January. We'll go through and do another detailed cost estimate update based on that set of drawings and also update that total program budget as well and have that ready for the city's review by the end of February. So, at the beginning of March, we'll be looking for your concurrence to proceed with the design, which will take us into the construction documents phase. We're anticipating that the bid set of drawings will be complete in mid-June. We'll expect contractor bids back mid-July and then really we'll be looking probably at that first meeting in August to bring a contract back to you all for approval. In terms of construction, we're anticipating as soon as we get that contract approved, we'll be ready to mobilize. One thing that Navigate will recommend to you all when we get into bidding is to actually bid the construction duration of the project. So, not just the dollars, but how quickly are the contractors able to get this done? So, right now, we're showing a range of about 12 to 14 months construction duration, but that's something we'll fine tune with that bidding process. And then, all said and done, we're looking at occupancy and completion in late 2026. All right, in terms of next steps, I think I've outlined kind of where we're at in the design process. Like I said, we will continue to monitor the costs as we move along, so we'll do another estimate update, but also we'll maintain a budget tracker. So, any decisions that are made that are different than what we had budgeted, we'll bring those forward to the team for evaluation and decision-making with associated budget. We'll do a constructibility review, this is where we assign a team from our office to really dig into the drawings and just make sure everything is ready for bid, it's clarified and there's no confusion when everything hits the market. We'll start working on site logistics planning, the bid packaging and really start marketing your project here as we move towards summer. Outside of the general contractor package, we will have a few other owner-direct packages, we call them. The biggest one will be the furniture package. We actually had a discussion today about starting the procurement of a vendor for the furniture systems, other things like the fitness equipment, the police and evidence storage systems will all be also part of that process. So, you'll see future contracts coming forward for approval of those awards. Mentioned technology systems, some of these are owner vendors that we'll begin coordinating with and make sure that we have their costs included in that next update to the total program budget. And that as we head into the construction phase, we'll need the general contractor as well as a company for materials testing and special inspections and commissioning. So, those are really the next steps. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has anything they'd like to review, so thank you.
I have a question for the chief. This property section, is that going to be big enough for property storage?
Are you referring to the square footages that's allocated in the building?
Yes, like this bulk property storage and processing and all that, that's going to be big enough?
Yes, yeah, that was, when we did that assessment, we looked at what we currently are using today as far as other, like for example, off-site storage using, you know, the basement facilities of other buildings, bulk storage and how we're handling that now. And what we have today is going to be sufficient.
Okay.
What we have programmed in this building will be sufficient.
Thank you.
I feel confident in that, it'll take us into the future for quite a while. Adding some of the technology and then some of the, we become a little more efficient with the design and things like that, so that helps as well with, as we move through that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, I wanted to thank you. It's obvious that you guys have done really good work because if you ask them, I ask a million questions all the time. I think I drive a lot of them insane with the amount of questions that I ask. But, they, throughout this entire process, they always had answers and I could tell they were very involved in the process, which is huge because I learned a lot in the very first meeting that we had, whenever I was questioning some things and realized the reasoning for some of the items that get put into a police station. Just things that normal people don't think about that you would need there. But, one question I do have is, as far as hardened areas, are there hardened rooms or how much of the building is hardened?
Yes, we have talked about hardened areas, the, I want to make sure I use the right terminology, the community room or what are the training room, it's labeled in the plan is a hardened space. And then Leah, I believe the locker room is also kind of partially hardened.
The locker room has hardened as well, the classroom has some hardened lid and it is as close to a FEMA certification you can get without doing all of the FEMA certification.
Awesome.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Additionally, we did, we talked about the levels of ballistic film for the glass portions. So, we'll be, you know, I think we've kind of landed on a number for that as well. You can get a little crazy with that stuff and you want to stop a 22 or a tank. And so, you know, and you got to be reasonable with the cost, but we, I think we found a good middle ground there. So, and then you can see on the rendering, we've also identified some bolsters and things like that, used some landscaping type features to help with hardening of the building as well.
Now, like on that, the ballistic film, just thinking ahead, is that something that if you, you save on the amount you buy? Because if we were to need to buy some for, I don't know, say, City Hall as well, can the PD pay for it and we'll put it over here? Perfect.
No, that's a great question, Mayor, we actually, just a side note, we're actually looking at that possibility in some areas of City Hall as well, so.
Perfect, thank you.
That's one of my concerns was like the amount of glass that I've seen in this rendering. I'm like, there's a lot of glass and if someone wants to go start shooting up, hopefully we have that protected.
Well, and aren't those windows at a certain level that if you were standing up in there, it would be above your head?
Yeah, so if you look kind of starting on the left, the gray brick area of the building, those are offices, but the windows are high and there is a CMU and brick base to that. So, there's a very solid base to that portion of the building where there are occupied offices. As you kind of move across, the area where the glass extends all the way down towards the ground is the, a portion of the public lobby, so not necessarily an occupied space, more of kind of traffic in and out through there. And then, as you move across the building as well, the area that's dedicated to fitness and training has the same sort of solid base at the bottom and it moves from there. So, yes, we've had a lot of discussions about making sure there's not visibility into the space and sort of that layer of protection at the base as well.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Very exciting to see all of this finally.
Thank you.
Not finally, like it's taken forever, we've been waiting on Joe, so it's. And I appreciate staff's time also. I know you guys have spent a lot of time and a lot of research and a lot of, a lot of thought has gone into this, so thank you.
All right, up next is our visitor section.
Justin Pippins.
Welcome, Mr. Pippins.
Greetings from Springfield, Justin Pippins, glad to be back. I just wanted to say that this jail project looks really, really good. I can tell you guys have put in a lot of work and hard effort and stuff like that and good work. So, I just want to come here today and throw my support behind all the things that you guys are doing. I'm seeing the progress, it looks really good, all the construction projects I saw last year, this jail project. So, just wanted to encourage you guys to keep your foot on the gas. The chamber is doing really well, I'm seeing a lot of diverse businesses starting to open up in Nixa. So, just really just here to encourage you guys to keep your foot on the gas and just to say great work, so keep up the good job, all right?
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Let's grab lunch soon.
All right, if no one else signed up, if you would like to speak now on anything that is not on the agenda, you can do so at this time. Not, I will close the visitor section. Moving on, first reading Council Bill 2025-01.
First reading Council Bill Number 2025-01, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, Annexing Approximately 22 Acres of Real Property Generally Located at the Northwest Corner of the Intersection of Monet Road and East Highway CC, Zoning Said Property to the Single Family Residential R1 Zoning District and Light Manufacturing M1 Zoning District, and Amending Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 1, Section 2-26 of the Nixa City Code, Presenting as Planning and Development Director Scott Gavi.
Thank you for that long introduction, good evening Mayor and Council. This is the annexation of what will be known as Taylor Farms, it is there at the northwest corner of Monet Road and Highway CC. I'm going to assume it's pronounced Monet Road, so I apologize if it's not pronounced Monet Road, I'm trying to be fancy.
That's correct.
Thank you. Again, the parcel is approximately 22 acres in total. There is an existing single-family home on the property, it is located roughly on the western portion of that property. With this map, you can see the, kind of get an idea of what the surrounding land uses are. To the north is a single-family land use, to the west, I believe those two parcels to the west are by the same owner and you can see a single-family land use on that one as well. And then, to the east is the Eagle Ridge subdivision inside of city limits and also some additional single-family land uses that are still located in the county. To the south is a mix of C1 and C2 zone property out in the county, so those are different levels of commercial zoning. You can see the C2 is that Commerce Road, that's kind of there on the west side of the screen, that does allow for some, apparently some what we would consider industrial uses in that C2 zoning district. So, and then we have the C1, which is kind of a strip center, that's just directly south of State Highway CC. So, that's the surrounding land uses. In the comprehensive plan.
Bummer. Summer, can you hit the next slide? So in our future land use map, that's part of the new comprehensive plan. I guess it froze up. Not my fault. This piece of property, it's actually, if you, if you're familiar with the map, you'll see that it's, it's currently gray. That means it doesn't have a designation for a future land use on it. It's interesting, this is the first one and it, there's no, our future land use map that we just spent a lot of time on does not have a designation on it. But if you look directly to the west of where this property is, it's literally the property directly to the west, it starts showing industrial land use. So and then to the south, again, you can see some more purple, which is industrial, which is why staff is recommending industrial zoning because we figure that corridor from what we're seeing on north there all the way to Monay could fall in line as industrial zoning. So that is what, why they are recommending M1 and also R1 for the house that they will be keeping on, on the property. For transportation. Yep, next slide. Okay. This will give you an idea of the zoning breakdown. Track 2 would be the 3.3 acres that will be R1. Track 1 will be the 19 acres that will be for industrial zoning. State Highway CC is a primary arterial and Monay Road is a collector road. So any access to either one of those streets that is being requested will require traffic impact study. Obviously, the portion that, if they're accessing CC will be reviewed and approved or denied by MoDOT. In addition to traffic impact study, there will be a sinkhole evaluation required. You can see one that has already been intended to be identified. To my knowledge, in our communication with the engineer that's working on this project, they are currently doing a sinkhole evaluation to identify if there's any other issues. But that will be, that is a code requirement. Before development can occur, we have to review those. In addition, utilities for this particular piece, you see the substation that's in the northeast portion. That was ours, but it's still our power. That's a lot of our power that's coming out of there. So the easement along the north and then the west side of the property that is for our overhead. There is also underground electric on the east side coming out of that substation straight down Monay Road. So electric will, shouldn't be an issue. There's plenty of it right there. When it comes to sewer, sewer is stubbed out through the Eagle Ridge subdivision to the north, just off the screen on Monay Road. That's probably the shortest path to connect to. There is also another possible sewer connection south of Highway CC that goes through the Wicklow Commercial. Again, that just depends on how the engineer chooses to extend the utilities through that area. The other utility, water. So we have, I'm going to use Nixa 1 and Nixa 2, just because it's two different water systems and it's going to help my brain. Nixa 1 will be the city proper water. That's what we're used to. It's what's in Eagle Ridge. It's stubbed out along the east side of Monay. I think it's right close to that substation on the east side. And then there's Nixa 2, which is the RDE system, which we now require, or have acquired. That is stubbed out on the southwest portion of this property. So staff's preference would be for Nixa 2 or the old RDE water system to be extended through this site. There will be improvements to that system with a new tank, water tower that's going in on Ashley Drive. So it'll improve, hopefully improve some of the pressure and flow in this area. But we would like to see those connected, but obviously they're on different pressure planes. So there'd be a valve in between those two systems. So that way we're not blowing out stuff down on AA or, or overtopping some of these water tanks on Nixa 2. So all utilities are readily available. The house, once it's separated out, we'll keep its current electric provider, which is not Nixa Electric. But we will be, once that is separated on its own lot, we'll be the provider for the rest of the develop, the future development on that site. Stormwater management and sinkhole care will be required according to city code. So again, that's, will be finalized at time of development, once we know what's actually going on, on the property. This property, or this agenda item was right in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier, or last week. Only the engineer representing the property owner approached the commission. So the PNC Commission did vote 7-0 to recommend approval to City Council. Staff does recommend approval of the two zoning districts. We feel that it is in line with what the intent of the future land use map is showing. We also. It is compact and contiguous to city limits with the Eagle Ridge subdivision just to the west. And it is a voluntary annexation. This will also be added to Council District 1. So staff does recommend approval. If you have any questions, I am available. Will the residential lot be put on sewer? Or is it, does it have a septic? I believe it is on septic and well. They do plan to extend sewer to that site to potentially get it off of septic.
I've got two questions, Scott.
Sure.
Light industrial, what does that include?
It includes quite a bit of land uses. I believe we looked it up during the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think there's over like 150 different land uses that could potentially be on that zoning district.
I was just curious because I've heard through the grapevine that we're talking about putting storage buildings on there. And I know we didn't like that coming in off 14.
Those, we did limit those to industrial zoning only. So this will be the perfect zoning district for that land use.
And you probably can't answer this next one, but it's something to throw out. Do you know if we can talk to MoDOT about putting turn lanes on there? Because my daughter got hit at that turn at Monay and her school, their school bus got hit one time too because it makes a little curve there and people don't see it and don't stop in time.
We can talk about to that to MoDOT, but it's strictly up to their guidelines as to what they're going to require.
Well, it's something I would consider if we're going to put ways to get in and out off of CC because that's a nasty little curve there.
Noted.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gobby.
Thank you.
No other questions. I will open up the public hearing.
Mark Thompson.
Hi, my name's Mark Thompson. I live at 399 East Highway CC. I'm right next door to the west. I, my main curiosity is, I'm assuming that he wants to get rezoned to get sewer hooked up? Maybe, that's what I'm assuming. And I didn't know where sewer was out there or, you know, and if there is sewer, where does it come from and who pays for it? I didn't, I, did you address that a minute ago? I might have missed it.
The cost of extension for the sewer will be on the developer to do. So there is sewer on the east side of Monay Road, just a little bit north of what we're seeing on the screen here. And then there's also a city sewer line that is on the south side of Highway CC, kind of through the middle of that commercial property that's down on the south side.
So you would just extend it on east, on the south side?
Yeah, their intent is to extend it, oh, I thought I dropped the mic, to extend it all the way to where the residential home will be. So that way they can hook on. That's, that's my understanding of what they're expecting to do right now.
I think those are my main questions, but I will agree with you. That's a nasty curve and, and there's a lot of traffic out there.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Young.
Good evening. I'm Mark Young. I am the engineer for the project. I'm here primarily to answer any questions that I can answer at this point in time. My address is 2136 West Chesterfield Boulevard, Springfield.
Anybody have any questions? Not yet.
Okay, so I'll address sewer and water just a little bit to maybe clear that up some more. We intend to connect to sewer on the east side of Monay Road and extend it to the west, as has been stated a couple of times, to the property boundary for the residential tract, probably entering into that property for a few feet in order to allow for a connection there. The water system is a little bit more complicated. We did ask for the city to provide hydrant tests for us so that we would know what the pressures were in the various systems and how they might work together. There is adequate pressure for some fire flow from the subdivision to the east. And so that seems to be the more strong system, the more usable system. Frankly, it does not provide an exciting amount of fire flow, but it does provide adequate fire flow. If there was a connection to be made between the two, the hydrant tests indicate that the water system to the west operates on a lower pressure level or a lower hydraulic grade line, depending which term you like. And water would flow from subdivision to the west if, if it was put there with no valve. Control valves are possible. They're very expensive. The developer's not interested in providing those. And so, again, that water line will probably stop at the residential tract.
Is that circled spot a sinkhole?
Yes.
Is that the only one on that property?
Well, they're doing a study.
That circle is a sinkhole. There is some speculation that there's a sinkhole on the east side of Monay that might extend onto the edge of the property. We haven't seen any evidence that that is the case. So I'm calling that. I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but I've been working on that kind of thing for a very long time.
That's fine. It's on the corner. You don't have to worry too much about it.
So I'll say that, that the one you're seeing, the circle you're seeing, is the only sinkhole that we have truly identified there. But I don't want to hide from you. There's a potential, there's a little bit of one on the other side. Well, thank you for your time and I'll go sit down.
Thank you, sir. No one else signed up. Is there another Mark that wants to speak? That seems to be the only guys that are talking today. If anyone else would like to speak on this, you can do so at this time. And thank you, Mark and Mark. I will close the public hearing. Anything else from Council? We will move on to first reading Council Bill 2025-02.
First reading Council Bill number 2025-02, an ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa amending the 2025 annual budget and authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement with the state of Missouri Division of Tourism for the purpose of accepting grant funding for welcome signs, presenting is Assistant City Administrator Cindy Robbins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Becca said, I have the honor of having the first budget amendment for 2025 request. At the end of December, after our last council meeting, Show Me Christian County contacted us regarding a grant opportunity with Missouri Division of Tourism for welcome and wayfinding signs. It was for a $30,000 matching grant that would reimburse costs for design, fabrication, and installation of a welcome sign for our community, or signs. Part of the guidelines were that the Economic Development Organization had to be the one to submit the application. And also, they were only taking one application per county. Anna Evans with Show Me Christian County was great to jump in and she kind of took the reins for this. And Show Me Christian County submitted a grant application on our behalf. It was my intent to come to, in January, to discuss this because, because of the quick turnaround, the deadline for application was December 31. But we were notified shortly after our submittal that Nixa would be awarded that grant. If you'll recall, back in the Nixa 2045 comprehensive plan, one of the items that was identified as a need for our community was more welcome and wayfinding signage. Unfortunately, we do not have any funds in the budget this year for a welcome, welcome sign project. However, this grant would give us the opportunity to achieve one of these goals of the comprehensive plan. Currently, we are evaluating prominent locations for potential signs. My hope is to put them on the Highway 14 corridor. Depending on the cost of the project, it may be that we can afford two signs within this budget. If that's the case, I would like to put one on the east and west corridor of 14, should we find the perfect locations. If Council would approve this budget amendment, we will need to enter into a contract with the Missouri Division of Tourism for the reimbursement of 50% of the costs of the project. And then upon entering into the contract, the city would need to put out an RFP for the scope of work. The completion date deadline for this project is June 30 of this year. So it's a very quick timeline that we would have to jump in and get done. Staff does recommend approval and I'm available for any questions you may have.
I will say, since I am the one that said I did not want budget amendments this year.
I know.
She did come to me and ask me and she was extremely nice about it. And this is something that, I mean, this is a question, welcome signs, it was even asked at the state of the community. It's something that gets asked very often. And I think it would be nice.
I think that would be lovely.
Since there is such a short turnaround time and deadline on this project, between getting RFPs, getting, put it out for bid, to get it projected and quoted, how quickly or what other steps after this is voted on, if it is approved, what other steps would we need to approve for you to make that happen?
Just entering into the contract, I've already written the scope of work, a preliminary draft of the scope of work. And so, once this was approved, we need, have to sign a contract with Missouri Department, Division of Tourism. Then we'll need to get with the purchasing and get this out as soon as possible. Part of the RFP would be a timeline so that we can make sure that we choose a company that can do all this within the timeframe that we were going to require.
Then you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to bring anything else back to Council for approval?
There is a possibility.
A RFP.
Without getting too far into it yet, because we haven't picked the exact location, but we could potentially have to bring a lease agreement back to City Council as well.
But nothing that would delay the, the moving forward of RFPs and stuff like that?
No, in the meantime, they could be working on the, the design and fabrication.
Okay.
Before we do the installation. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Anything else from Council? Moving on to second reading Council Bill 2024-39.
Second reading Council Bill number 2024-39, an ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa amending Chapter 117, Article 7, Section 117 to 77 of the Nixa City Code for the purpose of modifying provisions related to building height and building setbacks, presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gobby.
Mayor, Council, good evening. So just a quick recap. Prior to July 2021, we did have a uniform building height across all zoning districts of 35 feet. With that code change, we'd ended up dropping building height restrictions for commercial industrial zoning districts, but it remained for the residential zoning districts. So we have been approached numerous times about going above 35 feet. So staff has started those discussions with the Planning and Zoning Commission, with our community partners, with the Nixa Fire Protection District and with the Ozark Fire Protection District, because we do extend into their jurisdiction as well. So we have communicated with all, all of our essential community members. And we feel like we have created a, an alternative or a way to go above 35 feet. That's not copy pasted from other codes from surrounding communities or anything. Like this is something that we spent a lot of time on and fine tuned to make sure that it was a good fit for the city of Nixa. to make sure that it was a good fit for the City of Nixa. It wasn't just brought in because we liked it. It was something that we thought was a good remedy to allow stuff to continue to progress. So, as a reminder, if you're going above thirty-five feet, basically you fall under the bulk plane idea, which is it's a forty-five degree angle from the property line, it's basically a one-to-one setback. If your building's thirty-five feet, your setback will be... Or if your building is thirty-five point one feet, your setback will be thirty-five point one. The only difference in that is if you are high-density multifamily, highway commercial, or general commercial, or M-one, and you are adjacent to a single-family or two-family land use, which would be duplexes or a single-family home. The setback from those particular property lines, if you're going above thirty-five feet, will be one point five times the height of the building. So, if you're going forty feet, it'll be a sixty-foot setback from that property line. So, we took into consideration all the feedback we received from public hearings when we were doing multifamily zoning, and it's usually the single-family land uses that are, have a big issue with people potentially prying into their, or looking into their windows. So, giving them a little extra buffer hopefully will help. But, so that is the concept. And again, this is something that is not, again, stolen from any other community. This is something that we worked on and had numerous communications with the Planning and Zoning Commission on it. The Nixa Fire Protection District, their only concern was if they would have to increase their, our communities, or if it would increase our community's insurance score, which would then kick in that they would have to hire more firemen. That doesn't appear to be the issue, they said they were okay with it. So, Nixa, staff does recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission did, obviously, they did vote seven zero unanimously to recommend approval to city council. And if you have any questions, I am available.
You good?
Yes, sir.
First of the year, not his first time. Any questions?
I will say that the city clerk was provided an updated staff memo.
Yes.
Just so you are aware.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gobby.
Thank you, sir.
All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak to this, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from council? If not, I will accept a motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, a second by Mr. Peterson, roll call please.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, moving on, second reading Council Bill twenty-two-four-fourty.
Second reading Council Bill number twenty-two-four-fourty, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa Authorizing the City Administrator to Execute a Wireline Pole Attachment Agreement with Total High-Speed LLC, Presenting is Assistant Public Works Director Travis Kossi.
Thank you, Becca. Total High-Speed has approached the city with a request to enter into a pole attachment agreement to authorize them to utilize our existing overhead pole structure system for attachment of fiber systems to those poles. This is very similar to the pole attachment agreement that we entered into last year with Ozark Fiber. We did utilize, as with Ozark Fiber, we did utilize a template that was first developed by MPUA. It was modified slightly for the needs of Ozark Fiber and the City of Nixa to make sure we catered it to our specific community and our needs and desires as we see the process moving forward for the attachment to our existing infrastructure. We did present that same pole attachment agreement that was executed with Ozark Fiber to Total High-Speed. They did not provide or request any modifications to that, which is a good thing because we did a very thorough job of vetting that template and making sure that we catered it to our desires and our hopes and our needs moving forward with third-party companies attaching to our infrastructure. As a recap of our discussion in December, this agreement would provide requirements for permitting, the engineering necessary to ensure that the poles that they wish to attach to can handle the added infrastructure, and if not, what make-ready or improvements to that pole structure would be necessary in order to accommodate their proposed installation of fiber onto that system. And it also establishes the annual rate for that pole attachment, which in this case is eleven dollars and fourteen cents per pole attachment. So, it provides a lot of the necessary information that we need to determine if that infrastructure would accommodate their system, and we feel is a very thorough and agreement that will definitely look after the best interest of Nixa and our existing overhead pole system. So, with that, we do recommend approval.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Kossi.
Thank you.
No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from council? I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
First by Mrs. Morris, a second by Mr. Vess, roll call please.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Motion carries. Last thing, second reading Council Bill twenty-two-four-fourty-one.
Second reading Council Bill number twenty-two-four-fourty-one, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa Authorizing the Issuance of Not to Exceed Fifteen Million Three Hundred Thousand Dollar Principal Amount of Special Obligation Bonds Series Twenty Twenty-Five of the City of Nixa, Missouri, and Authorizing Certain Other Documents and Actions by the City, Presenting is Finance Director Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. This is the second reading to authorize the issuance of the special obligation bonds to pay for the lovely police department that we saw presented earlier tonight. In your packet was a pre-sale summary that was provided by Baker Tilly, our financial advisors, and there's a timeline on there if you looked at it. The competitive bids will be let next Tuesday. Will be the sale, the notice of sale was posted today. In the second paragraph of that pre-sale summary, it talks about the rating from Moody's. We did make application with Moody's for a confirmation of our rating, and we went through that process and received our rating status yesterday. And so, our rating for appropriated bond funds is AA three. Basically, this is like a credit rating. The top tier is triple A, and then it goes AA one, AA two, and AA three, and then on down. So, the top AA, triple A to AA three is the best of the best. And so, we are rated an AA two if we were to be issuing general obligation bonds, meaning we can use our taxing authority to pay for those, but they give us a notch down because we have no collateral. It's just, it's basically an appropriated debt service payment each year by council, so they give you a notch down. It's still a very good rating, and so we're very pleased with the outcome of our rating study. As I said, next Tuesday at ten AM, it will be, the bidding will be open for an hour. And then, at the January twenty-eighth meeting, our financial advisor, Tom Calico, with Baker Tilly, will be here to present the results of that with the interest rate and the firm that will win that bid. And so, he will be able to speak to interest costs and things like that at that time. So, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this process or where we are, or anything like that.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from council? Fair enough. I will accept a motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, a second by Mr. Lucas, roll call please.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. That is all for that. Anything else from staff?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment about, or give a shout-out, my appreciation to the street department and a few folks from a couple other departments for their hard work at the end of last week and through the weekend. They worked really hard on the street clearing of the snow. This is the first time we've had a snow in several years that we've actually been able to plow, and it didn't have ice underneath it. They got out ahead of time and pretreated a lot of stuff before the snow even came, so, you know, that always enhances them being able to, you know, get that off of there. And then, once the traffic gets on it, the salt and stuff is already down, so it starts mixing and gets it out. They did a real good job. I feel they cleaned things up really quick. Obviously, the weather helped us some on Sunday and Monday, but I just wanted to express that to council.
Yes, I was, I went out and drove around the city Thursday night, Friday, multiple times during Friday because we worked. And I could have came and picked up you guys, brought you to work if you wanted. And then Saturday, and then also on Sunday. And it was pretty impressive how much of the city got cleared outside of the normal, just kind of, snow routes. So, there was a lot of hours put in, and we greatly appreciate it. I did, just so you guys are aware, there was a couple areas that I noticed might be kind of problem areas and reported those to Doug, so they know in the future to maybe treat those, pretreat them a little bit more and watch those. Some of them are just because they have older, you know, mature trees next to it, and they didn't get any sun to help melt things off. Some of them are just because of a steep grade, so... But all in all, I mean, I've gotten a lot of compliments, a lot of funny phone calls, certain things that we don't do, just so you know, we will not shovel your driveway. Yeah, that's one thing you gotta do on your own, so, yeah. Greatly appreciate it, and greatly appreciate all the police officers that were out during all of that. I know that there was, there's cars out there that didn't need to be out there. Especially the one that was stuck trying to get into Taco Bell at seven-thirty in the morning. So, thank you guys so much. Anything else from staff?
Anything else from council?
I have something. I had a lady from, who is the registrar with the Isaac Garrison chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, reach out to me. They are wanting to work with the city to put a bench in to recognize and honor the soldiers of the Revolutionary War. And I forwarded that on to staff, and Mr. Matt Kraus is going to be working with this lady to identify a location and get this bench placed, so looking forward to seeing that happen.
That'll be cool. I did also want to thank the Cub Scout Troop Two Hundred for inviting me to come speak to their group the other night. That was a lot of fun, I always enjoy that. They're, they asked some fun questions. It's a good time, it's a really good time, so, all right. Anything else?
Real quick, sorry, there was one more thing from staff, just a reminder. I know. We're closed Monday, I just wanted to make sure council and mayor was aware of that for Martin Luther King holiday, so forgot to mention that, so now you can move forward.
All right, nothing else from council? Mr. Peterson.
I move that city council go into closed session under section six-ten-zero-twenty-one-two of RSMO. I also move that this closed session, records related there too, and any votes taken by the council during this session shall be closed under section six-ten-zero-twenty-one of RSMO, and that the city council shall stand adjourned after the closed session.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Lucas, roll call please.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Darlene Graham. Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Thank you all, and Happy New Year.